Now we can start.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. A warm round. Sorry, a warm round of greetings to all. It is an immense pleasure to have you all here today on the Rotary Day. Uh, well, uh, Rotary has been a part of my life for a couple of years and it has had a huge impact on how it has shaped me to present what I am. Uh, I am hoping that everyone of you has been part of the same journey and Rotary has created an impact in everyone of your lives. So today, I am very happy to welcome you all for this occasion. Today, we are going to talk about how to create hope in the world of sustainability. It is an immense pleasure to be part of this journey. So first of all, I would like to uh welcome Rotarian Vasudev and Mahavishnu for uh from the president of Coimbatore Change Maker for the welcome address.
Yeah, thanks, Vishnu. Yeah. Am I audible, Vishnu?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Esteemed guest Rotarian Nag Jyoti, dear changemakers from Hyderabad, Bhuvaneshwar and Coimbatore, invitees, special day Rotary Day greetings to all of you. On behalf of the organizing clubs, I am very happy to welcome you all for this meeting. Rotarian Nag Jyoti is a distinguished Rotarian and environmentalist. Her two worlds merge in E S R A G where she has been a source of great strength. It is our honor to hear from her today about creating hope in the world in sustainability. Creating hope in the world is the new phrase we are going to launch into. I heartily welcome Rotarian Nag Jyoti Madam. Welcome, Madam.
Thank you so much. Thank you for giving.
For someone who has been in TN all my life, Hyderabad brings to memories the brilliant Charminar, the cricketing heroes like Azar and Lakshman and the city that has evolved so well for everyone to find a home. I am happy to welcome Rotarians from Rotary Club of Changemakers Hyderabad of Ra District three one five zero. Bhuvaneshwar is a trendsetter in terms of their support to hockey. We recently saw the host, uh, the World Cup. Well, I am reminded of these lovely temples and clean streets of the city. I welcome Rotarians from Rotary Club of Bhuvaneshwar Changemakers. I also take this opportunity to welcome my fellow Coimbatore Rotarians uh joining from different parts of the world and country. I welcome retractors, M O C Retractor Vishnu and other invitees. My special welcome to visiting Rotarians from other Rotary Clubs whose presence makes us feel special. I close my welcome address with this thought. Hundred and eighteen years ago, on this day at Chicago, four people met and formed Rotary. Hundred and eighteen years later, we have lots of Rotarians all over the world. What would be nice, we taking a time machine and going there or Paul Harris and friends taking a time machine, time machine and visiting today. I leave the answer with you on this very special day of Rotary. I feel very special to welcome the distinguished speaker, fellow Rotarians, retractors, invitees and guests. Once again, welcome one and all for this meeting. Thanks.
Uh, thank you so much, Rotarian Vasudev and Mahavishnu. Uh, next, we have our special guest here, uh, who has been a part of the Rotary since a long time and has been contributing well to its development. Also, he is a member of the communication team for E S Raj. Uh, I would like to welcome Rotarian Neenaksh Reddy, President of Changemakers Hyderabad to introduce our speaker.
Vishnu, am I audible?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think the Rotarian Neenaksh Ma'am has some connectivity issues. Uh, so on behalf of Rotarian Neenaksh Ma'am and on behalf of Rotary Hyderabad Changemakers, I would take this opportunity to introduce Nag Jyoti Ma'am to this audience. So, dear Rotarians, Rotarians from different parts of the world, we are very happy to welcome distinguished Rotarians who out of this hundred and eighteen years of Rotary have been there for years and months and enriching our organization. Very, very warm greetings to all of you and it is a great honor for me to introduce Rotarian Nag Jyoti to this wonderful gathering. She was born and raised in Jalna in Maharashtra, India and finished her higher secondary schooling in nineteen ninety three. She went on to finish diploma in industrial electronics from Women's Polytechnic Diploma in Loni, Maharashtra. Her insights into internal industrial organization, waste management, micro computers and various computer applications ventured her to complete the Bachelor's of Engineering in Industrial Electronics in the year two thousand. And she worked as a design and development engineer in the field of electronics for four years in her parents' hometown, Aurangabad. She got married, her father-in-law was very interested in environmental projects and finished an M E degree in civil and environmental engineering. And she found her calling in alternative solutions for the huge quantity of wastewater that was generated in Maharashtra and not only Maharashtra, I think the whole of India, we faced a similar problem. And she started enjoying working and finding her heart in the environmental area involving environmental laboratory testing, environmental research and analysis and field works as well. And she got attracted to industrial affluent treatment plants, water and wastewater analysis and most importantly, preparing environmental impact assessment study reports for various industries before we given permission to start the industry. Her frequent travels to assess and monitor the water quality, wastewater quality, solid waste management like composting etcetera in the Krishna River basin gave her a lot of tremendous confidence and wisdom and she took it very seriously. Originally a South Indian, a Telugu speaking person, she has now moved from south to west, settled in Maharashtra. She can speak various languages, namely Hindi, Marathi, Marwari, English and Telugu. She can also understand Gujarati. Her husband is a next pilot from USA and they have a ten-year-old son who live with them in the peaceful town of Sangli, Vedakrishna River. Her brothers-in-law are settled in USA and UK for the past thirty years and she lives in a joint family which acting is a lovely experience. She joined Rotary in the year two thousand nineteen and from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two, she was with the Rotary Club of Vishrambank Sangli, Ra District three one seven zero. And her first with Rotary became elevated as she soon became from a member to Board of Directors, International Service Director etcetera. She has taken a liking for the Rotary Leadership Institute and he has completed R L A one, R L A two and R L A three twice between R L A graduations. And particularly in effective public speaking and motivating volunteers and doing public relations. She led a project in twenty twenty on COVID eight to India in Sangli area with Rotary District six nine nine zero Miami, Florida, USA with their members. And she is also a member of various Rotary fellowships like the Fellowship for Blood Donation, Fellowship for Birds etcetera and Rotary Action Groups like S N A, S M A, W A R L and W R A D. As an affiliated member of Environmental Sustainability Rotary Action Group and she has a full membership, she is very passionate about learning, serving and growing. She joined the Rivers of the World Foundation Proxion M D U S. And now she is currently with the Carrie Page Rotary Club, M C U S, Ra District seven seven one zero. Her first with S N A has been S T A L I N, she has served with the S N A Action Group as one of the directors. Communication team members with the Lawry, under the chairmanship of Rotarian Lawry and she is also with the S N A Service Projects in that division under the team of Larry and Kevin. She has an work experience of twenty-two years in industrial electronics and environmental engineering and she is also has a Rotary experience of five years and with this experience, she has enriched the society and we are very, very happy to have such a distinguished Rotarian, Rotarian Nag Jyoti Ma'am for addressing this meeting. Thank you very much, ma'am, and we are all looking forward to hearing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for this brief introduction of mine. I am still learning and I have to go far away. Thank you for inviting me. Thank you everyone for joining this meeting. I will start my presentation. Is my presentation visible to everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
Creating a hope in the world of one for sustainability in this related to the sustainability point of view. One thing. So, environment and sustainability, the water, energy, food and its all livelihoods for the common man related to the sustainability. First of all, this all presentation, I will divide into the three parts. First part, I will cover with the sustainability and what do you mean by sustainability and environment? Then I will switch over to S R A G. S R A G is the Environment Sustainability Rotary Action Group who is taking care related to the all projects of environment, how we can help to clubs and district level. And then I will show some photographs related to the live projects and some uh related to the whatever the environmental aspects point of view. Sustainable development, sustainable development means a development making a life better to have a better, can I enlarge my screen? Now is it visible?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Development means making a life better to have a better standard of living and an improved quality of life. Sustainable development means making sure that the things we do, the goods we buy and the lifestyle we have today will not harm the environment for us, for people in the other places for the future generations. So this is another way of sustainable development, we can say that is the development that meets the need of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. So in this way, very simple way of the sustainability is environment, economy and ethics. What is the history of the sustainability? Sustainability development actually started in the year seventeen thousand. So there are three key elements related to the sustainability development that is environment, economy and society. With respect to global level, national level and regional level. Environmental sustainability, what is the environment? And the environment is the air, water, mineral organism and all other external factors surrounding and affecting a given organism at any time. And what is sustainability? The ability to continue defined behavior of indefinitely. So about the goal of the sustainability is the least the development countries are more dependent on the agricultural and natural resources than most countries. If the resources run out, then it could have a uh great impact. That is a negative as well as positive impact that we can measure in two ways, negative impact as well as the positive impact. So the people lives in countries for water scarcity will be there and the supply will be decreasing and then number of the people can affect and limited source will be available in future if we are not living in a sustainable way. So deforestation will create and then most of the women's, you know, earlier they used to dependant, uh, they used to go long way to collect the water and then they used to cut the wood and then they used to live on that. So now anyhow we have, we reached to the modernization but if we are not living in a sustainable way, we can go back into the back whatever the normal undeveloped the situation where there. So sustainability is referred to the extent that organizations, operations and action protect, preserve rather than the harm or destroy the natural environment. So human point of view, sustainability of our planet. So in this related to the air, water, fresh water allow us to have high quality of life forever and produce the food. Un-sustainable lifestyle, actually we never want to go back to the unsustainability level of living. And sustainability reports, so it is the impact, operational impact on the natural environment. So broad sustainability goals are the renewable energy, create zero waste and products. What are the features of sustainable development? Ecological protection, density and urban design, urban infill, village centers, local economy, sustainable transport, affordable housing and livable community, sewage and strong water and waters. Measuring sustainability, we can measure the sustainability into the weak sustainability, sensible sustainability and strong sustainability. Indicators of sustainability are the resource accounting, value valuation of water, valuation of land, soil, forest, valuation of biodiversity, valuation of pollution impacts, valuation of ecosystem service. Issues involved in the sustainable development, growth, poverty, regional balance, reduction of income, inequality, arresting environmental depletion, degradation and enhancing quality of the life. Three core values of the unsustainability, consumption, production and distribution. The principles of sustainability are the protect environment and at the same time fulfill economic and social objectives. Economic growth and equity, not leaving any region behind and conserving natural resources, social development, ensure rich fabric and fabric of social and cultural diversity. Area where the sustainable development is needed is agricultural, atmosphere, biodiversity, biotechnology, capacity building, climate change, consumption and production patterns and the de-certification or drought situations. Education and awareness, energy, finance, forest, fresh water, health, human settlement indicators, industry and decision-making participation and the same way, science, small islands, sustainable tourism, technology, toxic chemicals, trade and environment, transport, waste, waste in the form of hazardous radioactive waste and waste in the solid waste and water. So overview of the sustainability is the natural sources, link between the population growth and the use of the world's resources. What sustainable development, importance of sustainable development, can we achieve sustainable development, principles and evaluation, discussion and effects of it. So what is the natural resources? Anything that extract from the biosphere and physical landscape and accommodate the needs of the man is defined as natural resources. A natural resources is further classified into renewable and non-renewable. Renewable resources means solar energy, wind energy, tidal energy and biomass which is endless. And non-renewable energy, energy sources are fossil fuels, oil, natural gas, coal. So population growth, we know that population is totally imbalance. There is a huge population growth is there and there is scarcity of water than food and economic point of view. So this is one of the graph related to the growth and forest energy consumption. And we know that the mining is taking place as well as for whatever the coal power plants are day by day increasing. And in this way, the fossil fuel is getting, you know, used and this is one-time source. It requires billions of years to develop again. So we have to now switch over to the sustainable solutions. So forests are getting, forests are the main resources which are getting depleted and then the extraction of the sources like extra fishing and other that also affect, so we have to think about it. And what are the problems? Problems related to them, if we are not living in a sustainable way, then air pollution, biodiversity depletion, then food supply problems, water problem and waste production. So major environmental problems are so many and this is the population growth. Causes of the, what are the causes related to the sustainability? Population growth, wasteful, unsustainable, poverty, failure which include the environmental costs of good and services, market prices. Too little knowledge of how nature works, the people with different environmental worldviews. And these are the population as well as the growth graph. Causes of environmental problem are population growth, unsustainable resources use, poverty, excluding the environmental costs from the market prices and trying to manage the nature without knowing enough about it. We, we are knowing very little about the environment and we think that we can sustain in a better way without understanding it in a proper way. So these are the lack of the assets, what are the, the number of problems we may arise in future that electricity, enough fuel for heating and cooking, then clean drinking water scarcity, adequate healthcare, inadequate housing, enough food for good health. Understanding our environment and practices, the sustainability is very important. So, environment, what is environment? Environment is everything that affects living organism. Ecology is a biological science that studies the relationship between living organism and their environment. So what is sustainability? Related to the ecology, sustainability is how biological system remain diverse and productive, long live and healthy wetlands and forests are example for the sustainable biological system. In more general terms, sustainability is the endorsement of the system and processes. So renewed continuously on human scale, solar energy and wind energy. So these are the environmental degradation and sustainable yield. So related to that, the great examples are the groundwater is getting depleted day by day and because of the industrialization and related to the agricultural runoff or related to the mishandling, the groundwater quality is also getting depleted. Now we see the groundwater, even color, looking towards the color of the groundwater, we can say how much it is polluted and related to the chemical aspects point of view, lot of foreign particles which are involved with it and water pollution will be there. So degradation of the renewable pre-assess sources. You will not use the resource, this resource, someone else will and the little bit I use or polluted is not enough to the matter and such resources are renewable energy in this way. Means we are not using the land but we are misusing it and we are thinking that someone else is going to do it. So we have to act individually and now the time has come to take a responsibility. Related to the existing, the fixed quantity of earth and metallic, these are the non-renewable sources, non-metallic resources, energy resources. And what are the main ways of how we are going to sustain with the help of the three Rs, reduce, reuse and recycle. Reduce means use less resources, reuse the resources more once to conserve and recycling the things. Tech plastic is one of the example. And related to this, we can, we have to non-renewable sources recycle. And related to them, our mainly the, our lives and economics depends on the energy that is sun and natural resources and natural services provided by the earth. Living sustainability means living off the earth natural income without depleting or degrading the nat- natural capital that supplies. And related to the growth, societies can become more environmentally sustainable through the economic development. Once we are sustainable, the economic development will be there indicated and improving the quality of life for everyone without degrading the earth's life support system. And what are the main four scientific sustainability point of view? Reliance on the solar energy, biodiversity, nutrient cycle and population control. So current emphasis and related to the sustainability point of view, pollution cleanup and pollution prevention. Mainly we have to focus on the sustainability point of view, waste disposal, waste prevention, protecting spaces and protecting habitat. Environmental degradation, environmental restoration, increasing resource use and less resource waste. Population growth, population stabilization and depleting and degrading and here protecting the natural capital. Examples of environment sustainability point of view, we can have a sustainable park, we can create one example related to the sustainable park. And what are the advantage of that? That support a stable and diverse economy, protect and enhance the quality of the air, water, land and other natural resources. Protect and enhance native vegetation habitat areas and fish and wildlife. Create opportunities for enhanced social benefits, build community and promote stewardship and educate the public for the sustainability. Results is more cost-effective park management practices and ensure the longevity of the park and recreational facilities. The main idea is that we must act responsibly so that the resources on the planet will be able to support many generations to come. Because the aim of the goal is to manage the environment so that natural resources people need to survive will be available for future generation. Advantages of sustainability are use resources more efficiently, improve productivity and enhance the reputation, enhance customer supplier and community relationship, low-cost producer and create the competitive advantages of different green product features. What we have to do, we have to take action locally. Now we say in the Rotary, think globally and act locally. So take steps to reduce the carbon footprint by buying locally and driving less and eating less meat. Avoiding the use of the plastic to reduce the waste and mitigation, mitigate the plastic pollution for them, our streams and oceans because anyhow whatever we are using and whatever the solid wastes are ultimately they are meeting the ocean and they are lying over there and we are drinking the water anyhow, everything is coming back to us only. Donate to the local food cloth bank to help improve the life those living in a poverty. Reduce, reuse and recycle, ask for the lawmakers to create policies that will reduce the carbon emissions, preserve natural resources and impose the penalties against the pollution. Actually penalties against the pollution not yet only for the industries but not on local point of view like agricultural like I am living in a Sangli. So Sangli is not at all industrialization area but here mainly the agricultural is the main uh source of earning. So here the whatever pesticides they are using, chemicals they are using, that runoff and near the bank of the river. So all the runoff is going and adding into the river. So no, there is no control, there is no E T P, there is no observations over there. So this, in this way, the Krishna River is getting polluted because of these sources also, even domestic aspects point of view also. So plant a garden or start a community garden in your neighborhood. Then take a stand for our planet and our future. With the current state of our government and the threaten to the environment protections for our new administration, the more important ever to take stand and make your voice hard and so that everyone come to know the environment is a very important and for our future generation, what wealth we are going to, you know, uh, keep, keep for our future generation, that is mainly the environment. Then powerful source is now a social media. So on the social media also writing the blogs and social medias outlets like Facebook and Twitter, if we are using F P R, raising the voice that can also reach to the government and the way the people can change their lifestyles. Now the main thing is the changing of our lifestyles and thinking mentality and mainly towards the recycling, reusing and reducing point of view, so we can raise our voice in many ways. With the help of picture, with the help of writing blogs. Environmental sustainability are the three type. Environmental sustainability is mainly a biodiversity, material and energy and biosphere interactions. Economic sustainability mainly related to the money, employment, technology, technological growth and investment. And socio-political sustainability is related to human density, equity, quality of life and political structures. Three model is the ecology, economy, equity, that is mean by sustainable development. So sustainable development problems are, if we are not living sustainably, then the what are the problems related to it? Depletion of the infinite sources, well, soil, mineral spaces, overuse of the renewable sources, forest, fish, wildlife and public fund, pollution, pollution in the form of air, water and soil, land. Inequality, the economy, political, social and gender and species loss and endangered species. Solutions, so solution is cyclical material use like three R, now we are using six R. Safe reliable energy, uh, life-based interests like health, creativity and communication and intellectual and spiritual developments. So there are the sustainability, weak sustainability and strong sustainability. So here weak sustainability, economic sustainability, cost-benefit analysis, consideration of financial cost and use the evaluate, evaluate the trade-off and strong sustainability point of view eject ecological sustainability and non-consideration of the financial costs, no consideration sector. And related to this sustainable yield, sustainable waste disposal and. And related to this sustainable yield, sustainable waste disposal and renewable substitutes. So related to this conventional economic systems, then natural resources and without able- ability to plan. And regulate the sources use of long term, there is no hope for the sustainability. And related to the sustainable progress point of view, the genuine human program. And happy planet index, well-being index, renewable energy platform, carbon footprint, energy intensity, social equity. And protect the, protect and restore the environment, natural environment capital and then ecological footprint, economical localization, miles to market. And the source related to the various aspects. Promote progresses, what are the framework of this? Promote progresses based on the multiple dimensions of human well-being, enhance the usage of the renewable energy sources. And encourage the fair distribution of the resources and opportunity, protect and restore the natural capital and promote the local economy. The methods take into the environmental health and social economic concerns. So local and seasonal food productions, organic and sustainable farming, reduce foods for animal origin, maximize welfare standards. Fair trade certified products and food democracy, reduction of the waste and packaging. Renewable energy, renewable energy protected by play a central role. Most of the uh strategy metic this thing which must be technically feasible and economically efficient. Examples of renewable energy are solar energy, wind energy and geothermal energy. So related to the carbon footprint, the mainly related, if you reduce the carbon footprint, then you your economical aspects increasing and in this way you can uh. This kind of protocol, uh year and frame convention, climate change has established international carbon market. So there is a carbon market, carbon credits are there. So you can take a benefit of all those carbon credits. Then what is eco-city? Now the green cities, now this concept is very important, green cities, green living, green planet. So related to that, I we are using the vehicles and we are even the small distances, we are using vehicles. So there is a pollution related to that. So we can use bicycles and we can change our lifestyles and we can switch over to the green uh. Uh cities in the form of, we can switch over to the whatever the waste are there, food waste at home, we can convert it into the compost. Where in- instead of throwing it away into the municipal, this municipal corporation load we can reduce. So in this way, there are so many practices, not only in the industry as well as in the domestic aspects point of view as well as the other aspects point of view. So that we can change our lifestyle day to day and we can survive sustainably. And looking towards the level of consumption and waste, thinking about the our careful use of the earth resources. Realizing that the each responsible for our action and that was we do have huge effects on other people. And the environmental pillar sustainable development is crucial. The approach towards the sustainable development would hang over a aspects, there are so many aspects point of view, everything connected and across generation and cross countries. So the system approach is mainly the environmental, social and economic. So related to the environmental, social and economic point of view, opportunities for the growth, then participation inclusion for everyone and protection of the ecosystem and biosphere. We need to be sustained. So people, culture, natural resources, biodiversity, environment and ecosystems. What need to be developed? The quality of life, justice and social equality, equal opportunity and institutions and culture of sustainability, fair income dialogue and communication. So we need to communicate and what are the main approach? Approach is like interrelated, we all are mainly conclusion comes, we all are interconnected, interrelated. We say we are different countries from different countries, different culture but it is not like this, we all are on the same planet. We are with only one planet earth, this planet we are sharing, we all are sharing. And in this way, we are all interconnected. So we have to think towards the sustainable living and whatever the resources we are using. And extraordinarily we have to reduce and we have to think in a green way. So the water, energy and food all are interconnected. Water security is very important, energy security is important and food security. So we have to the three sectors and in this three sect- sectors, the main uh security point of view. Those impacts are on the livelihood. So we have to take care of these all aspects. Mainly growing water demand for the agricultural energy industry, human and livelihood, even unen- one, any one um water resources. Almost ninety percent of the water consumed by the agricultural sector and about twenty percent of the population lack access of the safe drinking water. Groundwater depletion is there seventy to eighty percent of agricultural production dependent on the groundwater irrigation and water pollution. Related to the arsenic like matters, arsenic, waterborne diseases and high child mortality and poor human health and salination. Mainly we are seeing in India like in Rajasthan, the fluoride contamination is also there. So now uh fluoride, some areas we need to add the fluoride. So in the toothpaste they are adding the fluoride. And some water bodies they are totally contaminated with the fluoride. So fluoride uh is affecting the children, affecting mainly to the teeth. So level of some water bodies are contaminated with the arsenic. So it is very important to monitor the water bodies, river and we see what which type of water we are drinking. Nowadays reverse osmosis is very famous. So everyone is using arrow water for drinking because it is too sweet in drink but the minerals are very less. And related to that, in future we are having a problem with that also because of the less consumption of the mineral. And if we drink the direct the river water and river water is to not only by look, by aesthetic look point of view. But it is contaminated with the chemicals. So those are also affecting the health. That's why nobody is nowadays relying on the direct drinking of the river water. Instead of that, they are relying on the reverse osmosis. Arrow water. So food scarce uh security is very important. In future, we have to mainly everybody is diverting towards the modernization, everybody is getting attracted towards it. But in the schools also, we have to start these all things teaching from the school point of view only. We have to encourage the schools to take the trip to the agricultural land and so that they can have their own practical experiences and they can respect more. And in this way, even though we are having the modernization at the same time, everyone if keep the agricultural uh hand. Then definitely there will not be a food scarcity in future. And related to the energy security point of view, so here the sixty-three percent, there will not be any electricity earlier days. There will be, there was a problem related to the electricity. Now most of the problem is being solved. And now in future, we are having electrical vehicle also. So energy point of view, energy is very important. The effects, there are many effects which are already explained here. And related to the unsustainability, if the unsustainability is there, then most environmental degradation is done by the poor. And their poverty reduction leads to the environmental degradation, population growth necessarily lead to the environmental degradation. The pores are too far uh to invest in the environment. If we are thinking in environment, actually it takes years and years. Related to the environmental point of view, if you want to do some projects, then it is taking at least three years to sustain. And then that project is independent. So that's why in the rotary seventh focus area is the environment. And in this environmental aspects point of, we have to keep the patience and after three years it is getting. So that's why whatever available resources are there right now. So we need to protect it at the same time we have to increase towards the green planet. Then poor people lack of technical knowledge for the resource and management. So improper usage and improper management will also lead towards the unsustainability. And what are the conclusion related to the sustainability practices? These are the for achieving the sustainability, we need to practice. What are the tools are available, three R, six R, we we need to practice day-to-day life. Once we start practicing, then we may, we will reach to the sustainable living aspects point of view. So now I will switch over to the rotary aspects point of view. This is the background related to sustainability and environment. So rotary, our seventh focus area is the envi- environment and rotary is supporting the environment. And ASRAG, ASRAG means environmental sustainability of the action group. And this action group, all the action people are coming together, East uh South Asia as well as the East Asia. And ASRAG is having a different chapters like biodiversity, plastic solutions. And there are related to the environment, different, different chapters, different, different uh chairs are there, chair, co-chairs are there. So they are dealing with these all projects all over the world, wherever the projects are taking care related to the environment. So these are the committee members who are providing the guidance. So these are some. Protecting the environment, TRF will not support. Related to the, if we want to go ahead with the environmental project suspects point of view. Then TRF will not support those, at least I will just go through it. Community beautification projects, single event training and education session, single event river, beach or habitat cleanup. Tree planting that are not part of the larger ecological framework and strategy. Then there are the natural therapies, food distribution program, outdoor recreation activities, projects that involve only building infrastructures. TRF will not support and these are the main things. Related to the solid waste management club level, we can do the club, club level solid waste management aspects point of view. District level point of view also, we can go ahead with the solid waste management projects. Related to the biodiversity and conservation point of view, pollinator garden, pharmaculture and medical medicinal plant gardens and nurseries. Iro tree is one of the app of the ASRAG. So in Iro tree, everything you can upload. This is one of the app you download. Once you have planted a tree, so you can upload the name of the tree, where that tea tree is, that longitude, latitude and everything. Whatever the details related to that tree, if you are uploading it, then after years and years you can see the growth level of the tree and at the same time you can locate it. Related to the renewable energy point of view, so here the solar projects you can take care. And for each and every environmental aspects, there are the chairs and there are directors who are guiding. Especially for the solar related, solid waste management, compost related. So here the rooftop solar panels and micro grid, solar powered grids and now the photovoltaic agro-agro solar uh. There's a new concept with the Jadip Malviam who is dealing with the solar mainly. E-waste collection. So Guptaji from the Pune, he has done a great at Pune district even C one. Related to the E-drives every Sunday, you can have this E-drive because of this also ocean is getting polluted. And electronic waste means that is a PCB, is a circuitry. So in that circuitry, the tracks are there, tho- those tracks are with the gold, copper and metals. These gold cropper are illegally extracted and because of this lot of they are using acids, H two S four to remove that. And for that acids, they, this is, these are ultimately a lot of mishandlings related to the. Because of lack of the education, lack of the training and everything. So it is better to give this E-waste to the proper source and where the recyclers are there. If you are collecting the E-waste and you just call, then ISHRAG can, you know, organize how to collect that. And only this is one of the very cheapest and very good project and with the certificate. So you will only have to spend five thousand rupees for this project and your all E-waste will be collected. Circular economy, now earlier we used to the work with the linear economy, linear economy means ultimately with the landing of with the waste only. Now the recycling economy and circular economy, that concept has come. Now circulary in the circular economy, take the the resource, then from the manufacturer, we we are purchasing the things. And after purchasing, if once it is used, then again it is not going back to the industry, it is lying here and there. And there is no improper, total improper of the management is there. Now we have to send it to the recyclers and we have to see the new product is getting generated. And in a very good condition, if we are giving, then very less uh, you know, the time as well as the very good product. We can generate and very less time required for the segregation also and cleaning up the things and then recycling the things. Related to linear and circular economy. So now we have, we need to focus on the six R, six R means this can serve the planet. If we follow them honestly, reuse, rethink, reduce, repair, recycle and raw the organic stuff. And related to the carbon footprint, we have to see our carbon footprint related to the water, related to all aspects point of view. How much it is reduced and now carbon footprint calculator also available, we can calculate it. Individual point of view, club level point of view, ASRAG is already the working on it and if you want, you can approach us. And how does the ASRAG help? So project ideas related to the pollinator garden, pollination corridors and recycling. Projects like plastic and industrial waste N P P or bricks and tiles, you can convert the things into the bricks also. And like mask, you know, in the COVID, we used to use the mask and through here and there. Then Benish Desai is one of the ASRAG member who has used all this used mask and then converted it into the tiles. And restoration of the forest and conservation of the ocean, then reverse, conservation of rivers are very important. Adopt a river, Salvador Rico who is coordinating it and Mina Minakshi, South Asia. Uh past immediate past chair and Arun, Arun is current structure. So they are promoting the protect the rivers. So what, you are having a river locally. So locally mainly rotarians cannot do much related to the infrastructure point of view or designing point of view. But we can create awareness, we can create awareness, we can stop our earlier practices, we can stop adding the flowers to the river. And we can stop adding the external solid waste to the river. And we can analyze the water sample into the nearby laboratory, environmental laboratories and we can see what is the quality of the river, quality of the river. And once we are taking action and creating an awareness and after some months, if we are again checking the quality of the water, you will definitely see. There is a huge difference in the quality of the water because you know what flowers in India actually mainly we are worship. We are, you know, the under the name of the god adding the flowers to the river. And then in this way, what is happening, the mineral metals are there in the flower and that metal is getting added into the river. And in this way, the minerals are getting imbalanced and then the most of the quality of the river is getting deteriorated. And with these flowers, we can actually convert into the essence tick also and we can have other solutions on it. And we can protect our river. Related to the solid waste management, like we can do a composting and renewable energy point of view like solar energy. Global grant application ideas, community assessment point of view, there is a global grant related community and focus the group selection. Then consultation with the academic aspect, best practices, environmental impact assessment. One of the, we can prepare environmental impact assessment locally and then restoration. Waste management point of view, establishment, committee, stewardship and sustainability, ecological and economic point of view. Then what are the projects mainly? Mangrove restoration, coral reef restoration, mangroves related to the Christopher Putak. And Mina Minakshi, they they have so many global grants done related to the mangroves. And it is being encouraged by our Shekhar Mehta, past Arai president. And coral reef related, Mexico district governor Kiki recently, one navy, navy department has donated that uh navy to them. And they have removed everything and only the structural point of view, they have just submerged into the sea. And there after three months, they have seen the coral reef related lot of. And there after three months, they have seen the coral reef related lot of difference and there is a huge growth over there. And very good habitat, it has been created. So very good project, live project related to the rotary on it. And clean cookstove, forest restoration, our Hanamant sir, ASRAG co-chair, now current co-chair. He is involved with the forest restoration and mainly bamboo seeds. So many lots of bamboo seeds actually given to the rotarians and they have taken care of it. And plant rich diet and hydrophobic and aquaphobic, renewable energy products, Jadip Malvya sir. And scale up generation, then related to the cottage of industries, then menstrual hygiene, Sharmila. Nagrajin who is the chair for it and in this way we know all the projects, but these are the only lists. Related to the waste management, recycling and river protection. Climate change is going to affect all of us. So think big, think long term, think beyond your borders, be the change. And these are the links. I fix the planet. Whatever you do related to the environment, if you are doing very small thing or big thing. In environment, small things are very important and maybe you are no way thinking it is very small, but for other people it may give a very good solution for it. So I fix planet, you upload your videos and there is a competition, you may get the award also for this. And in this way, so much of collection of the solutions will be also there, not only for the award, but the collection of solutions from many different countries. And project, if we a club individually or district level, you have done environmental project. So upload this project and every Wednesday, there is a meeting related to the ASRAG internationally, everyone is coming. And then there it is a very great platform, there you represent your project and there itself, you can have an international partner. At the same time you are giving one of the example, live example related to the project from start till end. So that other clubs can replicate it. And ASRAG card, remember, if you feel that I am very much expert related to the water, air, soil. And there are so many aspects in the environment, environment is not a small, nobody is expert in environment. Because environment is a very big thing and there we all are everyday learning. Because there is, there are lot of uncertainties related to the environment, no one can say, I know this, tomorrow that may change. Like climate is changing, now climate change is a huge big issue. Related to the card, remember you can apply, you can say that I am expert in this, I have done so many things. So you can apply anytime for the card, remember and Iro tree is one of the app where you, whatever related to the environment you do, you can upload the project over there. And this is the. Mainly now I will just go through the photographs, whatever I have collected. This is the presidential conference Hyderabad, so ASRAG booth everywhere, all over the India, whenever there are conferences. ASRAG booth is there. Now also in Chennai, there is a ASRAG booth. So they are related, creating an awareness related to the environment. There we are exchanging and we are increasing our membership and we are involving the experts as well as the members in the environment. And in the ASRAG, it is not compulsory you be a rotarian. If you are non-rotarian, then also you can join and you can participate equally. So this is some related to the pollinator garden, we all ASRAG members, we have after the presidential conference. We had a one lecture on it and we collaborated with them. So environment activists. So this is related to the vertical gardening. Take flowers, essential, thermocall, thermocall is a big problem. I visited this industry when I was working with the international company. At that time I used to visit every industry for the quality assessment point of view and I have seen how it is getting manufactured and it is a big problem. So it is not getting, you know, decomposed or this thing, so it is better to recycle it. So ball, you know, seeds ball, you can use in the forest how they are growing, you know, seeds balls. They are just throwing away and then when the rainfall is there automatically it is getting germinated. So this kind you can do composting and food waste recycling and this kind of net and you can collect everything. This one of the presentation given through the ASRAG, very great presentation, rainwater harvesting you can think. And this is one of the village where the rainwater harvesting everywhere, every house, they are eco-friendly and they are creating. And you just give up with the plastic bags and use the cloth bags. Cloth is also one of the another problem. You know, the huge water is required, even jeans pants, you know, lot of water consumption. But there are again still alternatives are there. So it is better to give up with the plastic bags. And water related, you know, water barrels, this is one of the example, you can have a project in this and solar related. So these are the, you know, bricks, you can create whatever the small, small things are, they are just adding into the environment that you can just. Put into one bottle and you can create a bricks and through that you can, you know, can have anything you can build up, you know, even wall also you can build up. And these are the mainly, we need to stop these practices, you know, single banana and this packaging and all. It is always better to, you know, open market and purchase the vegetables from it. So these are the huge problem related to the plastic. And now government of India, I am attending the meeting related to the ministry of environment and forest. And I'm going and I'm attending their meetings, sometimes virtually also. So they have, they are converting the plastic waste into the, they are using into the making of the roads. And they have seen the sustainability of it. After 10 years, again the road is reconstructed. So it is successfully, you know, they are consuming all the plastic. So these are some things. And related to the wipes, now tissue paper is one of the issue and wipes. We are just throwing here and then see how the, it is in the gutter, how they are blocking and there is a problem. And now we are facing lot of tsunami and flood situations because of these all only, there is no free flow of the water. So somewhere something is tucking up and there the huge problem is coming. So these all are man, man created some problems, environmental problems are also there. So we have to properly dispose of the things. So we can recycle, reuse, this is the, you know, related to the milk packets, we are cutting the corner and we are not seeing where it is going. So it is adding up into the ocean ultimately and there is a problem, so we have to dispose it off properly. Related to tires, we can recycle the tires. This is a bowl, you know, the one project where the for birds, drinking water respects point of view. Cycling is very good and related to the, we, we need to speak, we have to speak up. And related to the mangroves, if there are no peace, then what is the flood situation? Mangroves are very important, we have to. Then related to the waste streams, we have to segregate the streams and accordingly, if we are going to treat, then definitely and treat it. With respect to CPC standards, if you are letting it add into the rivers with the permission of the government, then it is absolutely fine. But for the industries now, it is not allowed, industry is not, once they are lifting up the water only and later on they have to process all the water. And they have to treat it and they have to reuse it. Now letting out into the river, it is not allowed. Related to the pesticides, this is one of the agricultural runoff is one of the problem for the rivers. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Rotarian Nagjyoti ma'am for the wonderful insight and let us know, letting us know about the importance of being part of the sustainable end run. And the steps that we should take actually for a better world tomorrow. Also, I would like to thank and recognize all the visiting rotarians for their time and presence of being here. Rotarian Jeralin, Rotarian Anshuberry, Rotarian Arvind Sukan, Rotarian Barry Smith, Rotarian Sitrancha Shager, Rotarian Damon Valia. Rotarian Dominic Capetri, Rotarian Douglas, Rotarian Kamal, Rotarian Karthik, our own GGR. A Rotarian Harinderjit Kaur, Rotarian Jayapal, Rotarian Lina, Rotarian Hoppen, Rotarian Gruknidh Devi, Rotarian Richard Denton, Rotarian Wilveraj. Rotarian Steve Andrews and Rotarian Dulaapa and all the one and all for being part of this. Thank you so much for your presence here. Next, I would like to welcome Rotarian Ranjit Kumar Rao, President of Bubineshi Changemaker for water of thanks.
Thank you. Here it is a very auspicious day today. I thank to all the participants for giving their valuable time to participate in this program. And I extend my vote of thanks to Sister Rotarian Nagjyoti for his illustrative discussion on the pollution. How to eradicate, fight with the pollution and what are the sustainable projects we can as a rotarian can develop. I extend my heartfelt gratitude to her and thanks on behalf of my counterparts in Coimbatore. Changemakers and Hyderabad Changemakers. Thank you. Over to you.
Thank you so much, sir. I would like to welcome Rotarian Zatniwale. For the meeting closing.
Vishno, I think Lamankar has a question.
This one guys, I think there's technical issue. Sir, Rotarian Damon Valia, would you like to speak something?
Yes, can, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Well, good, good evening and good morning. I'm really proud to have this opportunity to join in and invited to participate in this particular sustainability issue. And just as a very, very brief intro, my link to being as a, in the rotarian goes back to when I was about eight or 10 years of age. Growing up in Naba in Punjab, India and I'm here now in USA for the last 55 years. But my grandfather was the rotary president and I remember my role in there was to, the rotary club meeting was held in my grandfather's home. And, and my role was to go and serve tea to everyone who came for that meeting. But anyway, at that time I remember a project where they had a goshala, where the all the stray car cows were. Then, you know, housed into a place to take care of them. Reason I'm interested in this is a, that I'm a scientist and so I've been involved with this, all of these issues. Miss Jyoti, Nagjyoti so elegantly shared the huge depth, the challenge and the need and the urgency. But what I'm sitting here and seeing the worldwide, that we have a huge divisive issue is going on about the sustainability. One, you know, whose sustainability us or our planet or other inhabitants. And this, the second is how do we go about, you know, achieving this, which is become a huge issue in, in terms of meeting the human needs. And if you give me a couple of minutes, I can, I'd like to share just a one graphic and to see if I can. If you can allow me to screen share. Apparently the host has disabled, you know, so you have to allow me to screen share.
Vishno, I think you are a co-host. Can you try Vishno?
Yeah, I'll try. I don't see a permission status on my.
By screen it says host disabled participant screen sharing.
Yes, sir. Actually we have a lost connection of the main admin system. So I think I will just give us a minute or two, sir, we'll try.
Sure, okay.
It might be in your settings that you need to change.
Sure, ma'am. Give us a couple of minutes. In the meantime, Lina ma'am, I think you had a question, ma'am. If you would, I'll get it done by the time, ma'am.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say is thank Nagjyoti for her wonderful presentation. Nagjyoti is also an honorary member in our e-club of innovation, which is based out of the UK, but it's a global club. And we are very honored with having her as our member, as our honorary member. Her contribution in ASRAG has been huge and we, I'm also a member of ASRAG. So I know that her contribution was quite, quite important. I wanted to ask you, Nagjyoti, you know, for those who say that the market will balance itself. For example, we know that corporates start for their own longevity and sustainability. They start kind of working with, you know, towards, with, with protecting the environment. Because they realize that in the long run, for their own longevity, they need to do that. And governments are always very slow to follow. My question to you is, what do you think of the ones that say, well, then it will not just naturally kind of balance itself? Because the market is going to determine that and then the governments are going to follow. When it comes to the role of government and when it comes to advocacy for the environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Lina, for this great question. But now the days has gone that naturally everything will get sustained automatically. Now the days has come that individually we have to act and we have to think, we have to think before purchase. And we have to think in the disposal of action. Now the manufacturers, you know, they are just manufacturing and their job is done. But now again the concept has changed that manufacturers need to recollect the things which are not, not at all recyclable. So they have to think on it. So in this way, now we all need to work towards the sustainability aspects point of view. And we need to think about the future generation. So it will not be automatically, at one level, nature knows very well how to balance the things. Now we are facing lot of problems related to tsunami, earthquakes and everything. These are not very natural, like a heart attack, you know, heart attack is not within the day or within a second, it is coming, it is from long years. The same way in the environment it is happening, everywhere there is a blockage, everywhere there is, you know, the mismanagement of overall handling of the environment. So these all the results, we all created somehow, we all are also responsible for it. So it is not automatically going to, automatically anyhow, everything will go. But for now the situation has come for future generations, we have to act now. Thank you so much. I hope given justice to your question and your.
Yes, you have answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Arvind sir.
Arvind sir.
Arvind sir, you're muted, sir. You need to unmute. I mean, sir, I think you are muted, sir. You need to unmute.
Unmute, sir. Can't hear.
All right, okay. Nakprasid Rotarian, you did a very excellent presentation, but I'll tell you one thing, very simple way. I'm a Rotarian, past district governor, I was a director for water sanitation, rotary action group. And I have lived in five countries originally from Assam, okay? I have done lot of things and one thing, main thing I would like to tell you by simple word called PPP, Project Planning Performance. This is we started to the foundation, Rotary Foundation and then four countries, we selected. That was 2014, 10, something like that. that was uh two thousand fourteen, ten, something like that. Anyhow, and all the things you have said, we, it is a step process, project planning performance. Okay, so you have presented amazing all illustration very nicely. But we have a step process, rotary we can't and also is a very important thing. You have to select the worst place, the village, forest and start from there, what need to be done. Called the need assessment and you have to have a group of people, I'm a civil engineer by the way. And, and, and we worked through all different thing. And two thousand fifteen, I got the Rotary highest award project service of Abso. So everybody wants to do something like you have a different group. I was director for water sanitation rotary, my passion was providing clean, safe water. So like today, she has presented amazing all these, so it's a step process, you can't do everything at one time. So anyhow, I like to congratulate you and follow this. And I am now left Tacoma, Washington, that was a big club, four hundred members. And it has their own uh own foundation, one million dollars, so we had a lot of money. So I did Ethiopian, Indian, all kinds of projects. So that's the things I suggest you. Uh the P P P, okay? And congratulation again and let us keep in touch. And this is an excellent Zoom meeting and, and we should follow like this. Thank you again for my few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Arvin sir. I communicated to you already during my Krishna River presentation in S R A G. So you must be remembering that and I am already connected with you in the WhatsApp.
Yes.
With Subjay Datta from Melbourne, from USA, from Rock, from foundation. Subjay Datta, sir, you and me.
Yeah, I just, by the way, I just got the Prabhashi Bharata Sonman Award. From the highest award from the president of India called Prabhashi Bharata Sonman. The two thousand twenty, I was an indoor to get the picture with the prime minister, the lady prime minister. So anyhow, I think rotary is doing excellent job. It is a matter of the making the club, you can do yourself, everything, your club, your district and the foundation. And, and you do through global grab and which I did. Yeah, I did in Maharashtra, I did in Rajasthan, I did in Assam, I did in Africa, Ethiopia, two million dollars like that. Two million dollars to uh thirty thousand dollars project. So you can do, it is, it is up to your will, okay? What you want to be, what you want to do. Exactly, I don't want to say, yeah, the, the, the uh they might travel to all these countries, meeting all these people, uh always helps us. And always you are called karma. Is I was, my neighbor here in Arizona, we moved here now. I'm golfing now, by the way, keeping my, you know, I'm not young, you know, I'm a senior uh guy and what, and then one American guy say, Arvin, you are successful because you do good karma. Karma, it means they work. I was so happy to hear from Americans saying karma. You know, that's in Samis and Hindi. Hum to Banash me gata, ussali, I can speak Hindi. I'm Punjab, also Punjabi because in Banaras uh university, Hindu university, you know, so you can see my age, I graduated in nineteen sixty. And some Barapani dam, then I was, oh, by the way, I was in Hyderabad in nineteen sixty-two. Uh Nagarjan Sagar dam and Bhakra dam, I studied, I was sent by some electricity board. Still I remember Hyderabad, the Nagarjan Sagar